elected council members to have sworn in one returning, I guess technically. And we will have our city clerk, also our interim city manager, Justin Brer, do the swearing in ceremony before we begin.
All right. Can everybody see the flag?
Yep.
All right, so I'll go top to bottom. Why? If you will stand and raise your right hand. And this goes for everybody. When I'm done, just say I do if you in fact do. And that will be good. So I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state. That will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council member and in for the city of Dexter, county of Washtenaw and state of Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
I do.
Wow, thank you. I ask you the same. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state. That will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council member and in for the city of Dexter, county of Washtenaw and state of Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
I do.
Thank you. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state. That will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city of Dexter council member and in for the city of Dexter, county of Washtenaw and state of Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Congratulations to our two new council members, Jamie and welcome to our returning incumbent Zach. Welcome back again. We will call the meeting to order and Justin, if you can have the flag placed back up there. I'd asked everybody to stand and join. Join us in saying the pledge of allegiance. Julie will go on, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
Thank you, everyone. Ms. Jones, how are you?
I'm fine.
If you would please call her all. Everybody is reminded to say that they are present and the city slash county and state that they are participating in the meeting in, please.
Councilmember Cousins?
Present and I'm at seven, six, four, eight, fourth in the city of Dexter, Washtenaw County.
I know she was on there earlier.
Donna, can you hear us?
Can you shout out? Attending remotely in the city of Dexter, correct?
Yeah, that's good, Carol. We'll accept.
Okay, Councilmember Griffin?
Here and attending from Dexter and the county of Washtenaw.
Hey. Councilmember Hubbard?
Here and attending in Dexter, Michigan and Washtenaw County.
Knight?
Here from my home in Dexter, Michigan.
Michelle?
Dexter, Michigan, USA. Yes, I'm present.
Mayor Keel?
President, participating remotely from my home in city of Dexter, Michigan.
Student rep Alex Gilbert?
President from Webster Township.
And Balam Alex?
Um, present from Dexter, Washtenaw County.
And you're the city, right?
Yes, he is.
Okay, got it. Okay, all president accounted for.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate it very much. Items on our agenda this evening is approval of the meeting minutes from a regular city council meeting of November ninth. Just as a Okay, motion by Julie, was it?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Either through the raise hand feature or waving your hand. I'm trying to follow each person. Is there a second?
All seconds.
Paul, thank you for seconding the the motion. Any discussion? Julie, you made the motion, so I'll let you go first to see if there's any changes or corrections you have.
Didn't see anything that needed to be changed. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cousins, anything in the minutes?
Nothing I saw. I'll probably miss Mr. Smith over the years of finding small errors, but that's okay. It's good. Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members? Does anybody have any corrections or anything they note on the minutes? Okay, hearing and not seeing any hands or anything, so Ms. Jones, if you would call the motion to approve the meeting minutes, please.
Okay, Michelle?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Griffin?
Epstein.
Hubbard?
I, I, Carol, I don't even see. I think Donna dropped off.
Okay, I'm not there temporarily.
Not seeing her back. She must be trying to get her reception back.
Yeah, I don't see her on the list.
Okay, um Cousins?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. All right, so
May I ask, Jamie or Griffin was an abstain, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard. Thank you.
So we'll show that it passes five, zero with one abstention then. Item D is a prearranged participation and we have none this evening. So we're down to item E, which is approval of the agenda.
I can make that motion, Cousins.
Thank you. Motion by Paul for approval of the agenda. Thank you. Second by Knight. Thank you both.
You're welcome.
Is there any discussion on the agenda?
No.
Hearing none. Ms. Jones, if you would call vote to approve the agenda this evening.
Okay, Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Still absent.
Okay, Knight?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries to approve the agenda. Thank you very much. We are on to page two where we have one public hearing this evening. It is to take public comment on the conflict of interest ordinance. And just so we kind of go over protocol here, typically we will open the public hearing, then we'll take public comment if there is any. We'll officially close the public hearing and then it's council's norm to act or potentially act on the the item that we took the comment on. So I'd like to open the public hearing at six oh nine PM. If there's anyone online that's participating, I would ask that you use the raise hand feature on Zoom. If you don't know where that is, it's under your participant. If you put your mouse at the bottom of the window, the participants will come up. If you click on participants, should bring up a list of people that are online and in lower right hand corner, there's a little button that says raise hand. You'll know because a little blue handle appear. Or at least it'll show us blue hand. If you're dialing in on your phone, you can also dial star nine on your cell phone or alert us. So I'd like to open the public hearing at six oh nine. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on this agenda item? Justin, I'm not seeing any hands go up. Are you seeing any, anybody waving at me that's on screen?
I am not seeing any.
Okay, I'm not either at this time. Okay. Okay, just so the public is aware, this is an item that is required by our city attorney. We have not had it in place. Been read a number of times or shown in the council packet a number of times, was originally scheduled for a public hearing in mid October and that happened by its chance to be the meeting that the our virtual meeting powers got suspended by judge's order. So it's had to be rescheduled and we have it before us tonight. So seeing no public comment on this, I'll close the public hearing at six eleven. And if someone is good enough to make a motion, there is a redlined version of this in the packet. Does anybody want to make a motion on this at this time?
I would make a motion, but it'd be to postpone it because I have some questions from last time that weren't fully addressed.
Oh, okay, um.
I would, I would second postponing it. I, I also have questions and I didn't know when it would be appropriate to bring them up if I had more detailed questions, if, if this discussion time would be the time to bring them up or if in advance, if in advance of another public hearing to discuss it. So I guess I would second postponing it only because I also have questions about it.
Okay, um, well, why don't we, um?
Why don't we move to make it, move to adopt it? We can have discussion and then postpone it.
That's what I was going to suggest. Exactly, Zach. I like that. If somebody could do that, that would be appreciated.
I will do that.
Move. Okay, so the, the mo- motion to approve the conflict of interest ordinance?
Yep, on pages eight through eleven of the packet with the red line changes and the purple one.
Eight through eleven of the packet. Is there a second to support?
Sure, I'll sec- I'll second that.
That, thank you. That way we can get to discussion. Appreciate that, Jamie.
Sorry, yep.
No, okay, so motion by Zach, second by Jamie. Obviously, this is a little bit u- unique. We need to have a motion on the table in order to discuss anything, so that puts it there. If, if at such time, we'll now move to discussion. If at such time the discussion doesn't lead to desire to act, somebody can make a motion to postpone at the appropriate time and that'll put it to a a future agenda. So why don't we discuss it? Zach, you, you made the comment that you had some questions first. Why don't you go first, if you would please?
Yep, so the, the tangle that I see that ought to be addressed, I know I raised it last time, was that it doesn't address very well what happens if the city manager is the person who's in a potential conflict of interest because the city manager is a city employee. By the plain language of this, the city manager is in charge of conflicts of interest with city employees. So the mid city manager would be in charge of their own conflict of interest, which appears to be a conflict of interest itself. So there are a couple of changes in section five and section seven that would have to address that. I don't have language right now to propose that because there are a couple of places to have to be, but I wanted to raise that point and see if anyone else had a similar concern.
I think, this is Jamie, I think I originally had that concern. I think the definition of public official between city employees and all other public officials, meaning elected and appointed. So I guess I took at least in terms of section seven where they're talking about investigating complaints, how they're handled. So I took that point one where it says, point one addresses a public official except city employees. So I took point one to also include any appointed officials, which would then include the city manager. Point two, to be only members of city council and point three, to be city employees. So I don't know if if that is a proper or not.
Jamie, I, I believe that the intent of number one was to include appointed city, all, all city employees.
Well, so number one says accept city employees. But any public official, where I think any public official would
Sorry.
Yeah, appointed.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
Yeah. So then I think I, I think a city manager would be included in point one because they're a public official, that's not a city employee.
All right, so, so the question number one that we need to get clarified is, is how do we classify city manager, right?
Yeah, do they fall under public official or do they fall under city employee, which I think they fall under public official?
So I, I would say based on kind of how point one deals with the investigation. That city manager would fall under that category. Just because at that point, it should be referred to city council and investigated by the city attorney. Whereas with all city employees who are working underneath the city manager, the city manager would be the person responsible for conducting the investigation.
Which is item three.
Which is item three. We, although, I mean, number one can be clarified further saying something to the effect of except city employees, but including city manager.
Okay, yeah, or we could just define public official somewhere in here too.
It, it is defined in up above in section three. So it says includes all city of Dexter elected and appointed officials. And then goes, you know, and then mentioned city employees after and so everybody there is considered a public official, but it just seems to differentiate between elected and appointed versus employees.
I was thinking you could just take city, what I meant by defining public official is taking city employees out of there, but
Right.
I don't know. Maybe that's a rewrite. Maybe we should just bring, sorry, so that's question, question number one is how, is to clarify that, I guess, or is, or is it still unclear? Is, or is justice explanation suffice for everybody?
I, I like that explanation and that's what I was headed towards, but I think it ought to be as clear as possible for a conflict of interest. Because whenever that comes up, there's going to be extra electricity in the air and you want to have it as clean a path as possible.
Okay. What other questions do you have, Zach?
That, that was it, is just making sure that we, we have a clear process for the city manager through this.
Okay. Jamie, you said you had some questions as well?
Right, right, yeah. And I could start within that section. I think also just for readability, I had to read section seven a number of times to figure out who fell into, what the difference was even between one and two. So I don't know, because one is saying public officials accept city employees, so it excludes them. Two is generally city council, city council members. So, you know, when I first read one, I thought city council members were included because they're, they're all, you know, they're public official excluding city employees. So any elected or appointed person would fall under one. But then we're also saying city council members fall under two. So I, I also thought for extreme clarity, it would make more sense to, you know, accept city employee and a member of city council. Otherwise, it seems like a member of city council falls into both.
All right, Justin, help me remember. Did, did Scott Manziel have a hand in drafting some of this?
He did, yep. So he, he did review and provided feedback.
Okay, so maybe, maybe we can try to get those questions over to, to Scott. To get it better clarified. And get a rewrite back. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I, I have a few more points if that's okay.
Sure, yep, okay.
So
Do you want, do you want, Jamie, I guess what I'm, do you want to, do you want to submit them in writing too after the fact so we all know, you know?
Yeah, I, yeah, I just copied relevant sections into a word document and, and inserted some comments. I'm happy to. I don't know what would be the appropriate, who I could send it on to Justin.
Yes, please. I would, I would send it to all of count, to Justin copy council so they'll know what's going and then he can get it to Scott.
Okay, okay. So one question I had in section five. It says, you know, disclosure and determination, whenever a potential conflict of interest exists, the public official must notify the city. So this is in terms of disclosing a potential conflict of interest. They must notify the city. I guess it wasn't clear to me who the city is. It then, you know, it mentions later, you know, in writing filed with the city manager. So I didn't know if the city just means city manager, if it means you could tell anybody working for the city. I guess I wanted more clarification about what it meant to notify the city and if it meant
Yeah, I think, I think it means, I think it means you can notify the city orally at a meeting or in writing to the city manager. So a meeting would be to, you know, in front of us. Or if you just choose to, to make it known written, you would give it to the city manager.
And the city, so the city is considered council?
Well, like I said, it's notify the city and then it's defined as if you're, if you're doing it verbally, you're doing it at a meeting in front of the council, or if you're notifying the city in writing, it would be addressed to city manager.
Well, and, and
Is my read of that?
If you are a member of a board like ZBA, PC, you would notify them at that meeting.
Uh, so it can be orally or in writing and then it said and then it says in other, in either case, it should be made part of the record. So meaning it would be recorded in that particular meeting's notes and or with some dis- written disclosure statement with the city then. It would be in one of two places, either the specific meeting notes or a disclosure statement.
That, that, that was generally the idea.
Is there any reason not to have like a disclosure statement for always on file, like the same form always with the city manager? So say it was made, it was orally disclosed at a meeting, it appears in the meeting minutes and then after the fact, it's still submitted. Is there any benefit to that or any drawback to that?
You're saying it should always be done in writing? Is that your comment?
Right, or that, I mean, so it seems like it would always be done in writing because it's either in meeting minutes or it's a specific disclosure statement filed with the city manager. I'm just wondering if it's, if it's disclosed orally at a meeting and then happens here in that meeting minute, just in terms of making it easier to track, if there was one file that had all disclosure statements that the city manager had. So after oral disclosure, you would still, no matter what, file the written disclosure.
Guess we just have to change it that way if that's how we want things submitted, but I think, you know, once it's brought up, it's, it's out there.
Right. I guess I just think back, I mean, I know, you know, so I spoke on the record about this as a citizen in mid October and I think one thing that wasn't clear to me is, and, and I'm not this is not to suggest that this, this ordinance, is it maybe a move by the city in a different direction? I think it would have been helpful to me as a citizen who raised concerns about a particular issue in the past. If I could have been pointed to a single document or a specific meeting minute or something to say, just to have further, I don't know if it's evidence or justification of the fact that there, you know, there had been a discussion on the part of the state, this, this, you know, this disclosure had been made. It was documented on, you know, this meeting on this day or here, you know, I'm just going to look through my file and I'm going to pull out this disclosure statement. So I'm thinking about it in that context that if a citizen who isn't at that meeting or finds out about something after the fact, then wonders, oh, when was this ever discussed or when was this decision made? It might be hard to track it by, you know, going through meeting minutes and looking to find something versus, oh, yes, here, we can just pull out this disclosure statement. But maybe other people don't have that thought.
Well, I would say, Jamie, I would say if you have proposed language that you think should be considered or discussed, I would encourage you to draft it and then we can
Okay.
Let everybody look at it, you know what I mean? Instead, I, I, I think I hear what you're saying and that it's fine to think about, but why don't you write it down? And we can have Justin put it in for everybody to see. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, definitely. So, yeah.
The thing that, that I would add to that, sorry, is trying to anticipate anything in, in, in advance or requiring anything in advance can work and, and it might be an issue for, for other things. So like if, if something were brought up at a meeting and we're brought to a vote at that meeting unanticipated or in something that's unanticipated. It wouldn't provide an opportunity for someone to, to submit a disclosure statement prior to the meeting.
Right, right, yeah. I would just intend for it to be something like that happened, so somebody disclosed it orally. It would, you know, then be documented in those meeting minutes, but then after the fact, they would still, you know, follow up with the city manager to say, I want this, you know, formal document on file.
I don't think this precludes anybody from doing that the way it's written, just so you're aware.
No, no, I agree. I don't think it does either.
Like I said, once it's out there, it's out there. It's, it'll be, it would have been, it'd be documented in, at the meeting in which it's, it's brought up. So it, it will be in a matter of record, but I, I would, I would say, Jamie, if, if you, if you want to change something, please draft it. You know, with a red line, something and then let us all take a look at it. We'll, we can have more discussion on it.
Okay. All right, I think, I think my other comments would be of a similar nature. So I, you know, having heard that, I'm happy to to do that. I just, you know, I didn't want to have any communication that was inappropriate outside of a public meeting. So if, if what I'm being, I just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly, that I could prepare sort of redlined version and, you know, just a few of these sections, I could send it to Justin, see seeing the rest of council. Then it would show up as a future agenda item, as like a discussion point.
Yeah, yeah. If, I, I think, Jamie, if, if, if you just want it included, if you want it included for future discussion, just get it to Justin. If you would, please copy me. So I know what to him. Try to do it before the Monday of the next packet and then Justin will include it as an item as part of the next packet. I was thinking, I was thinking if there's anything that you have typed up that you want the city attorney to look at.
Gotcha.
Specifically that, that before doing so, you could, you could send it to Justin and copy all of council so they knew what was at least going to, you know, for Scott's review. That was my thought.
Right. Okay, but yeah, I can coordinate with Justin after the meeting.
Please.
Yeah, well, we, we can talk about it.
Are there any other council members that have questions on this? At this time? It, it sounds like what we'll do is, before we, the, the motion to postpone comes in, sounds like what we'll do is we'll gather the information, we'll have a discussion item, figure out which redline version we, you know, we want to go forward to another public hearing with and then probably have to set another public hearing date, you know, since, depending on how, how different, how different it is from, you know, from what we just read or observed.
Yeah, if, if the, if the ordinance is substantially the same, we, we don't necessarily need to set another public hearing.
Okay, all right, either way, Justin, thanks.
Well, if we postpone it to a, a date at this meeting, the folks who are interested were on notice for this and they'll be able to track it. So generally, we're, we don't have to set another notice thirty days ahead of time.
Yeah, good point. Okay, so who wants to make the motion to postpone then?
I moved to postpone to the second meeting in December. Not the first meeting because we have a special holiday week, so I imagine that'll be tougher for the attorneys to turn it around.
So you want to, you want to do this at the second meeting of December?
Correct.
Typically, we try to keep, typically we try to keep that meeting light, so hopefully there's not too many substantive changes. Typically, we try to keep, typically we try to keep that meeting light. So, um, hopefully there's not too many substantive changes. Ms. Fisher, welcome back. Donna, I see you have your hand up.
Oh, we, we, we can't hear you, Donna.
Donna, okay. She's still having audio difficulties, I guess. Can anybody else hear her or just? Go ahead, Donna.
No, I don't. You can't hear me.
Now we can.
Oh, all right. Um, I, don't you need a second for that motion?
Uh, yes.
Okay, well, I have a second. I raise my hand a second.
Okay, great, great. Thank you for the second. Good to have you back.
Thank you. I'm, I hope I'm staying.
Okay. So motion by Michelle's second by Ms. Fisher to postpone action on this to the second meeting in December. That allows sufficient time to give everybody a chance to get their questions into Justin to get them over to Scott and back into the packet by late December. So. Ms. Jones, if you call the vote on the motion to postpone?
Yes. Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, we're down to item G, which is non arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak this evening? If so, please, uh, use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine on your phone. If you're listening from your phone. Justin, I'm not seeing any hands up. Are you seeing anybody?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. Seeing no, no participant or nobody at this time, uh, we'll move down to communications. Uh, we just had the upcoming meeting list in the packet. Does anyone have any comments or questions on the upcoming meeting list? Okay. Seeing none. Um, we'll move into reports. Our first report this evening is from our public services superintendent. Welcome, Dan.
Good evening, Sean. Good evening, council. I provided you with a two week written report. I also have a couple of updates I'd like to start with. Uh, the first, uh, updates on, uh, leaves. I think we finished the old part of town. Uh, we've done many, many loads, uh, this leave season. Uh, we went through this afternoon and got everything we think in the old part of town. We still got to go out to Dexter crossings, uh, Westridge and Huron. Um, with the weather that we had, uh, last, last week, uh, we have a lot of brush that, uh, we got to chip and usually we do the chipping on Wednesday. I think we're going to start that tomorrow. To try to make sure that we can get through it Wednesday. If we can get through it tomorrow, um, I think we'll have the vac truck back out Wednesday, trying to get the rest of the leaves in the subs. But, uh, we've been very fortunate this year with the, with the leaves in the subs. I don't know if everybody's noticed, but the pear trees and the oaks have lost, lost a lot of leaves this year. And usually it's a lot later where we got to come back. Any questions on, uh, chipping brush or leave pickup?
So last relief pickup on Monday and bags.
I think it's the first week of December, isn't it, Justin? Is, is when we're.
Oh, so, so sorry, Paul. I muted you instead of unmuting myself. Um, so, uh, November 30th is the last day of bagged leaf pickup for by waste management. Um, but we, the DPW is still going to pick up bags on, uh, December 23rd, January 6th and January 20th.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So if there's no questions, um, on my updates, is there any questions on my written report? Hey, Dan?
Yep.
I, um, I like the proactiveness on the wastewater treatment plant exit signs. How long would you say it's been since the batteries were changed? Or how often do you test those?
Try to test them once a year.
Once a year? Okay.
Yep. And then also with the DPW too.
Gotcha. Okay. Just curious. Looks like they have their hand up. Who does? I'm sorry.
Zach.
Zach, sorry. I missed. Go ahead, Zach.
Uh, I'll ask it so the new folks don't have to. What's an MXU?
MXU is a part of how we read the water mi- water meters from the residential and the business owners. You have the water meter that's on the inside of the house. And, and on the outside of the house, we have an MXU with a coupler on it that we, the MXU can send the read from the water meter to a computer. And if that doesn't work, then we got a little coupler on the outside that we can go up and we have a little machine that can take that read. And then we can download it into our computer as we're reading meters throughout Dexter.
Thank you.
Actually saves us a lot of time. I used to read them all by hand, actually write them down. And as the years went on, uh, we've gotten now to where we can read all the road water meters in town in two days or less.
How many of these do you think it used to take, Dan?
It'd take at least a week with two guys and that wasn't with, uh, with Dexter crossings or, uh, here in farms or, uh, Westridge. It would take at least that. So we, we've saved at least a guy. But it takes.
Technology's come a long way too.
It has, but you, you still got to maintain it. The batteries die in the MXUs. A lot of different things can happen. So we, we try to work with the office up front that does the billing, um, quarterly and see what ones aren't reading and ones we're having problems with and, uh, try to keep up with it. With the maintenance on them.
Does anybody have any questions for Dan? Other, other questions? Zach, I see your hand.
Yep, this is, um, not related to the report. I've been getting questions from folks. Um, do we intend to do winter, winter maintenance for the extension of the Mill Creek Trail, uh, cleaning the snow off basically?
Yes, we do.
Uh huh. Okay.
Yep. And we all, go ahead.
Um, my other question is if it's possible to do a tour of the wastewater treatment plant, uh, in the near term future. I haven't seen it since the, the new thing, uh, since all the changes that have been done. And we have two other folks who haven't been in there.
I would love, um, to give a tour to anybody, um, wastewater and water. Um, I think we're going to have to, uh, plan this out. Um, maybe when COVID slows down a little bit. Yeah, but we'd, we'd welcome that.
All right. Thank you. I'm all good.
Thanks, Zach. Any other council members have questions for Dan this evening?
I have one.
Okay.
Uh, Jamie here. Uh, just working with somebody else in the neighborhood troubleshooting, uh, you know, comparing water bills. Hers much higher than ours. Is there, um, mechanism by which like they can call the city and say, here's what our units are. We're trying to explain this, you know, figuring out if they have a leak. Uh, how would a citizen go about troubleshooting a water bill?
Well, they could call up to the city office. Um, we have a couple of people up there that, uh, will, will try to help them through that. And then also, um, after they call the city office and they figure out exactly, they look at the billing, look at the past billing, see if, see if there's a problem there, then they'll call down and, and talk to me or my, my water, our water people. And we can go out and we can, uh, put dye tablets in the back of their toilet. We can do an investigation of their home to see if, uh, some homes have, uh, some down in the basement that run off of water, uh, for backup.
Yeah.
Uh, we look at, uh, uh, their softeners. Uh, the humid, dehumidifiers on their furnace. So we've got a process that we can come into the home and we can look at and then, uh, try to help the homeowner or the business owner to try to identify what the problem is. Also with the newer meters that we have, um, we can go there with a computer and actually link to the meter. It gives us 30 days of data of when the water's running and when it's not running. So we can actually tell, um, if it's a toilet leak or if something significant, we can look at that because there shouldn't be any use usually during the middle of the night. Uh, we don't have new meters on every home and business, but we're working towards that right now.
Okay. So first step is call the city and they'll, they'll help direct. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Ja- Jamie, just from past experience, um, I've funneled the number of complaints or questions slash complaints to Dan and the guys are really good. They, uh, they often find leaks and um, it's amazing how much just a little drip or if your toilet runs, you have a handle that's loose or whatever it adds up. You know, as a homeowner, sometimes you, you've become unaware of how leaky something is, you just ignore it or whatever. But, uh, it's a great place to start.
Yeah. The, the other thing is, and, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, a lot of, a lot of folks call up and, you know, think that their water meter is broken. Um, but in general, when water meters, um, start failing, they slow down and they don't speed up.
Gotcha.
But like I said, we're more than welcome, um, to help with anything, you know, if it's going in the house. Obviously we're going to look at the billing first and, and look back six, seven, eight months on it. They'll do that up at the office and then we'll, uh, uh, start checking off the boxes until we can help, uh, figure out what's the problem.
Great. Thanks.
And actually I believe it was, um, two years ago, we, um, changed the format of our utility bill. Um, so that way there's a graph or a chart of, um, water usage. So we people could compare this year to last year. Um, as well as each billing cycle between then.
Uh huh. Uh huh. Thanks.
Okay. Good questions. Um, are there any more questions for Dan? Okay. I'm not seeing any. So our next, uh, report this evening is from our community development manager, Michelle. How are you doing?
I'm fine. How are you, Sean? And how are you, the rest of council?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Um, I hope you're all ready for Thanksgiving and I hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving and a great long weekend. So you have my report in front of you. And before I go into the updates, does anybody have any questions for me first?
Uh, Michelle, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Can you remind? Um, how long have we been working on the outdoor service area definitions and all that stuff?
Um, just a couple of months.
Okay. So we would have seen that when, back in like September?
I believe so. Maybe end of August.
That long? Okay.
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 Do you need a, um, a quick copy of it again?
Um, no, I just couldn't.
Packet?
I just couldn't remember if we saw it right away when we approved all that stuff or if, I was trying to figure out the timing as I was reading and it just didn't come to me. So just thought I'd ask you.
Yep. Okay. Excuse me. I'm so sorry. Okay. So my first update.
Michelle, I've got one more question related to sort of the out. It's not really the per se exact ordinance part, but did, did, um, did we ever clarify or get clarified a, a written set of rules for heating the tents?
We do have a set of guidelines that the, uh, DAFD provided to myself and the businesses in conjunction with, uh, working with, uh, Don Schnetler at the building department.
Okay.
They may need to do some refinement on them. Um, because you have, um, um, if, if a tent is going to be erected for a longer period versus a shorter period, like with these tents were, um, um, uh, there may be some minor tweaking, but there's not a complete overhaul. But yes, there are some guidelines. Would you like to share them?
The, the reason I asked, I asked the, the question is sort of a lead in and, and you know this, but, uh, council may not because the, the DDA meeting just occurred this past Thursday. And the DDA, um, approved an expenditure to pay for a tent in our commons area uh, that we set up within our social district between the Dairy Queen and the Beer Grotto. And I guess I just wanted to make sure that I, that I understood or that we all understood what the rules were for providing heat to that tent at, at, you know, regular intervals if, if we choose to do so. And I didn't know, I, I guess I'd like to see a copy of the written document. Um, Michelle, if you have a chance.
Yes. I can provide it to you and to, um, the rest of council.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So the first update, and this is the one, I'm only going to give one verbal update and it's going to be for the social district. And I'm going to try and make it, um, uh, quick for you. Uh, but there's a lot of moving pieces. So we have, I have confirmation of four participants. Dexter's Pub, Beer Grotto, Aubries and Erratic Gales. The Fillmore has declined to participate. Um, and so on account of that, there will be, um, some changes to the district boundaries as a result. Excuse me. And you will be provided, um, what that looks like. Excuse me. Um, trash and snow removal are the two big things, um, that both the, uh, the DPW and the businesses, um, were concerned about. So with trash removal, um, we've, we've, we've got a really good handle on it. Um, DPW has a seasonal schedule, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, generally 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. Um, and they do the entire downtown and they'll add the, they'll add the commons area to that route. Excuse me. Um, the, um, the only thing that would change that schedule would be if there's a snow event. Um, and as you know, uh, once we have a snow event and if there's any accumulation, especially if there's a large accumulation, there's a, excuse me, a list of priorities that the DDA operates within, um, uh, to, to clear the streets and then sidewalks and alleys and parking lots, et cetera. I may not have had that or in that order correctly, but there is a prioritization. And with that said, um, um, but manpower gets stretched thin, especially if it's a large snow event. Um, and, um, so the, the DPW asks if the businesses would be willing to participate in clearing some of that snow within the commons area so that when they come through, they can just get the snow from on the other side of the barricades and move it out. The businesses are willing to help with that. The one thing we have to remember though is the businesses aren't going to be in that tent on a regular basis. There's that serving going on. Excuse me. Um, um, the tents are, or the tent, the common area is the place where, um, uh, someone can take their, their beverage from one of these licensed businesses and consume the beverage. Um, so there's not going to be staff. The, the thing that maybe, um, worth considering, both either DDA and city council, um, or together is, um, when we used to have the ice rink up in Monument Park as well as behind the, the, the fire station. Um, we hired someone to clear off the snow, um, from that. Um, it may be, it may be worth considering hiring an outside company to come in and just do the snow for the commons area. It may make things work more efficiently for DPW, but it also may work, uh, better for the businesses. Um, and I don't expect an answer tonight, but I'd like you to think about it and possibly give me some feedback. Um, either through email, excuse me, or a phone call. Um, the last, the last thing builds on what you said, Sean, about what the DDA has agreed to provide. Um, and that would be the tent. The day, the tent, I started calling places today, the tent has to be a snow grade tent. Um, um, that's going to have a different cost structure than what, um, than what the DDA originally, um, um, was presented the information on, Sean. So, um, I've asked for estimates, uh, but the, the big thing to keep in mind, there's a couple of things. In order, because we'd have this tent up for a prolonged period of time and because it's going through the winter, um, those poles for those tents have to be secured into the asphalt. Um, the company does repair it after the tents are removed. Um, but I think that's something that council, um, and DPWs or his DDA may want. may want to consider a little bit before just jumping headlong. The other thing is currently under the emergency or epidemic orders. Tents have to have flaps up on three sides and can only have one side closed. I'm not sure how well you can really heat something that's open on three sides. We're just going to have to play a lot of this by ear and go day to day as it pertains to epidemic guidelines. But those are things that I thought were important for you to to know off the top right now. Do you have any questions for me?
Michelle Paul, I heard about the three sides. I just don't know how that's going to work in Michigan.
I'm sorry, Paul, I couldn't hear you.
I don't know how that's going to work in Michigan, you know, and some other climbs that are a little bit different or certain days in Michigan, it may work, but I mean, three sides. What does that do for you? In trying to provide some kind of an atmosphere so somebody's gonna want to participate in that. And so I just feel that, you know, there's so many things here that and the cost of a tent that has to be able to hold up under snow. And the other things, I'm certainly trying to do everything we can and I'm supporting everything we can for the for the bars down there and the restaurants as and anybody else. But boy, I just don't see how some of this stuff is working with the guidelines that we have to work with. It just seems to me impossible.
So the the at this point, these guidelines are only in for the next three weeks, which means they end December 9th, Justin, is that right? Or the 8th?
8th or 9th.
So if they're not extended, then the then the the side flap issue, if you will, doesn't isn't a problem anymore.
I get that, Michelle, but with the trend that we have and the consistency we've had for for COVID cases, it doesn't change. It goes up, not down. And if we make a decision and then if they're still going up, that's not going to change. And therefore, we're just going to spend money that I'm not sure we're going to get the money out of it or the participants or the borrowers are going to get any help out of it. I just a lot of questions in my mind and maybe we just take a chance and hope it works out. But I don't see that happening soon. And it's going to get colder.
Yes, it is going to get colder. And the other thing with those with the snow grade tent, they have to be radiant heaters. Excuse me. So traditional patio heaters like we've seen out outside currently, the tent companies do not allow those. So it would either have to be a blown in heater which you which would be rented and it can run on propane or it can run on a generator. But it wouldn't be the traditional patio heaters like we see out on Main Street currently.
Michelle, do you want to talk about the the timing of approvals real quick?
Oh, thank you, Justin. Okay, so the the we're in sort of this flux kind of quandary. Right now, the outdoor seating that is in the parking areas ends on November 30th. December 1st, those tents are gone, so are the barricades. And because of the emergency order, those restaurants can only do either outdoor seating, their regular outdoor seating or carry out and delivery. If they're not going to have the outdoor seating and at this particular point, neither Dexter Pub nor Beer Grotto nor Aubries are going to continue their existing outdoor seating after November 3rd or 30th. So they're going to be relying solely on delivery and carryout. Your next meeting to possibly take action to approve this so that staff can apply for the social district permit through the Liquor Control Commission, your next meeting is December 14th. So we've got a time period in there in which the only thing businesses will be able to rely on is just the carryout in the outdoor, carryout and delivery. Even if even once you've approved it, there's still going to be, I would think, at least a week before we hear from Liquor Control that we get a permit. So I guess the point I'm trying to make to you isn't so much that I need you to make a decision tonight, but just to keep that in the back of your mind, we don't want this. I wouldn't think we want this to drag out to the end of the year before making a decision. I guess that's the point.
Michelle, help me here. So what what exactly is the decision? Just simplify. I mean, there's nothing in front of us, which I assume would come from you. What is it? What is the decision to do?
The decision is that you're comfortable with the the management and maintenance plan as it's been drafted. That's what you saw in the DDA's packet and I believe.
It's in ours too.
And it's in yours now. You'd be.
What's the what's the motion? What's the motion?
The motion would be to direct staff to apply for your social district permit to the Liquor Control Commission.
Using the maintenance plan that's there and the management plan and whatever we're working through.
Right, following the supplement, the submittal requirements that MLCC has. Yes.
Okay, so so I don't know where council is on their thought on this, but you know, we have, or I suggested in my report that I wanted to do a meeting next Monday, the fifth Monday to at least not a meeting, but have a workshop so we could discuss our organizational matters and such. I mean, if if council needs a little bit of time, would you want that to be a special meeting so we can act on that and ask staffs to bring back a formal resolution so it's in front of us in writing?
I support that, Sean. I think that's a that's a great idea. You know, we can, we can still do the other things and get by and have that. But if we have have to do action that will help out these people, let's get it done and we can.
Then then they're not waiting on us and Michelle, you can just go and you're not, we're not waiting in three weeks or whatever to do it. I mean, unless there's enough council members that don't think we're headed down this direction, but I assume we're headed, we're going in this direction. Okay, then that, Michelle, that's what I'd like to do is, Justin, we're gonna, we're gonna change next Monday's workshop to be a special council meeting where there'll be one action item related to a motion to approve the district. And Michelle, if you could work with work to get, you know, whatever's needs to be a part of that that agenda item prepared so we can take action next Monday.
Yes, I can do that and I appreciate that. Thank you. And I know the businesses will be appreciative as well.
We can get that posted, John.
What's that?
That's it for mine unless you have any other questions on my report.
I guess have what Justin said, we can get that posted is what he said, Sean.
Okay, yeah. Well, and again, for for, you know, special meetings, we I think we only need technically what 18 hours notice or something, Justin?
Right.
But you know, we'll try to, we'll try to shoot for the packet just to give Michelle some time, maybe Thursday or Friday for everybody. If that's okay. Well, you're gonna, you're gonna try and do it before Wednesday, huh?
Have to.
I forgot about the short week.
That's okay. I think we can do it. It's fine.
Okay, hopefully you have everything ready to show and just have to draft the formal resolution, Michelle.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Michelle Paul here, the grand opening of Noble plants I see is on this Friday, the Black Friday.
Yes, sir.
And is that their grand opening or do we coordinate at all or has the chamber been informed of that? Or are you going to have some other kind of ribbon cutting later on, which they can do?
I know that they're opening, they're shooting to open to be open their first day on Black Friday. Whether it's called their grand opening or they're going to have something later, I'm not sure. Excuse me. And I I'm not sure if they've coordinated with the chamber or not.
I'll make sure the chamber contacts them to let them know that we'll provide a an opportunity for ribbon cutting, all that. Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Paul.
Okay, any last questions for Michelle? Okay, thank you, everyone. Next up on the agenda is a written report from the Office of the Sheriff. Does anybody have any questions on the written report from the Sheriff's Department? I'm flipping through as fast to see everybody's pictures. So if don't be afraid to let me know if you if I'm missing a hand. Okay, we'll keep going. Down to our city manager report from our interim city manager, Justin Brier.
Thank you, Sean. So with the COVID numbers, the way they are, we have gone back to split shifts for office staff, water and wastewater. And we're going to be considering it as well for DPW. In my report, I included some information about training that the MML is doing, the new council member training. It's $65 a person and we do have money in the budget for council members to attend training. So if anyone is interested in in attending any of the sessions, two of the sessions are two different days and then one session is one day. Just let me know and I can get you registered for that. Bit of good news, the Twisted Fish sculpture was returned. We found it on Friday afternoon in Mill Creek Park. For the most part, it was undamaged. And you know, we do appreciate, you know, whoever whoever returned it. And we're going to be looking to reinstall that this week. Utility bills went out this week. Those will be due in a month. The charter amendment passed at the last election. So I've gone ahead and sent my certifications to the state and county and published a or will be publishing a public notice so that it will be in effect. Likely next week, the winter maintenance flyer that we do on an annual basis that talks about, you know, the order of operations for snow removal should be hitting doors next week. November 30th is the last day of bagged compost pickup by Waste Management. But we are still going to be picking up from the DPW December 23rd, January 6th and January 20th. The week of December 7th is going to be the last week for loose leaf collection. And then that'll restart in the spring. Or the the bagged compost from Waste Management will restart in the spring. And then Monday, December 7th is going to be a bulk item pickup day for trash.
A date again, please. What date is that, please?
Or for bulk item pickup, Paul?
Yes.
December 7th. So that's that's the the one item, first Monday of the month.
Thank you.
Sure. The offices will be closed November 26th and November 27th for Thanksgiving. Winter taxes are going to be going out next week. And Shop With A Cop and Luminary programs are collecting donations. And I assume, Sean, you'll talk more about Luminary during your report.
I'll try to get it started, Justin, and you can help me or we'll go from there.
Okay. The last thing I have for you is I met with Paul Evanoff and Carol from Smith Group about the Mill Creek slope bid. And we're going to be looking to republish that here in the next week or two. Hoping to get more bid responses and better bid prices. We're going to try and get that project completed before the market opens in May, before the farmers market opens. Other than that, does anybody have any questions for me?
Jamie?
No, I don't. Nope.
Oh, I thought you put your hand up. I'm sorry, I'm looking.
Sorry, scrolling on my computer.
No, I'm still getting used to protocols for everybody and what they look like when they move their arms. So sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, sorry about that. Questions for Justin?
I just want to comment, I called Justin when I heard immediately about the about the damage of the sculptures and very upset about it. You know, we spent a lot of time and a lot of money on that and want to thank him for immediately getting back to me when it was found and let me know. And hopefully people will be happy about that. And you know, I was already in a process of raising money to re put something else up if necessary. So if there's a cost for the troll, let us know or me know and I'm sure that the Rotary will be glad to help out. And funding part of that, if the city can't do it, okay?
All right, I appreciate that, Paul. And just to kind of follow up on that, I have been in communication with the troll sculpting artists. And they're aware of the damage and they are willing to come back and attempt repair. But because of the way the troll sculpture is constructed, they will likely need warmer weather. So it may not happen until spring. But she is, she is going to come out and take a look and kind of see what her thoughts are with regard to repair.
That's great that you were able to contact her, Justin. Thanks.
Welcome.
Okay. I'm not seeing anybody waving at me or saying anything. Any further questions for Justin? Okay, we'll keep it moving. I'll jump down to my report. Like to touch on the luminary process a little bit that Justin referred to. This year, there is a signup genius that has been an email that's been sent out. We're seeking block captains or people to take responsibility for a certain street within the city. And the idea is that you sign up for the street. And then on December 5th or 12th, depending on availability, you would drive to the DPW, you'd get the the supplies loaded in your car and enough to make the kits. And then you'd take those back home and you and your family could put the luminary kits together and then pass them out to the number of houses on the street that you signed up for. I believe the idea is to that Kurt Augustine, our street foreman, who usually orders the sand. He and his brother and a few others are usually the ones that are there on the first Saturday of the of December loading the sand into plastic bags that goes into each of the candle luminaries. So they're still planning to get that all prepped ahead of time. Aaron McKillen, who is really the leader of this, is going to help pre count out a number of candles and and bags for each street. So it'll be a kind of a individual basis for everybody to show up at the DPW, get the street loaded in or get the number materials for your street loaded in your car and then you assemble the kits back at home. And the goal is to keep the tradition going so that we can you know, have luminaries throughout the city like we have in past years. I'm interested to know, has has anybody on council heard any feedback on this or have you, have you seen the the email with the signup genius?
I do have some news, Sean.
Okay.
So as of this afternoon, all of the streets are accounted for with block captains except for Baker Road.
Okay. Well, that's a big one.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll have to figure out how to fill that that gap, obviously, but that's great, Justin. That's great. So that's how the luminary process is going to go this year. As Justin said, they're still taking donations. And I think you can make checks out to the city, right? And they're right with the say Luminary Fund?
That's correct. There's there's also a GoFundMe.
Okay. Second item, and it's not in my report, but it's a communication that I got from two members of the Dexter Days Committee who have also worked on the Holiday Light Parade. I sent an email out to council in advance of this meeting, asking you to think about that event. The two folks reached out to me and essentially asked whether we were still you know, trying to limit the number of public events that would draw undefined numbers of people, you know, to common spots within the town. And I thought And I thought since, especially since we're meeting, you know, new as a group of seven, the past council was pretty unanimous on not doing those types of events. We made one exception for the schools and the graduates because all the families were in their individual cars. But does does anybody or does everybody get the email that I sent out? Does everybody understand that that there was an inquiry about guidance on whether they should, you know, go through the the effort of applying for the lighted parade?
Yes, we got it. I got it, Paul.
Okay, does everybody still feel like, you know, now is not the time to be encouraging that type of event?
I have a question.
Yes, please, Jamie.
Sorry, I'm just now realizing that the video where you see when I'm speaking is not my face. I'm dialed in two ways because they have a broken webcam, so I'm sorry.
I can't. No, I can see you, your face and your body and your hands.
Okay, okay, just yeah, two different screens. Um, question, I I don't, what's the back spray on ICE, the ICE Fest? And because minder, I thought I saw an article about the ICE Fest coming in January.
So so Jamie, I'll I'll try to tell you what I know, and Justin, if I get it wrong, please help me, but the the ICE Fest is in the middle of January, and I and what we I believe what we as a council talked about a few meetings ago was allowing the sculptures to be displayed in the park, sort of as an outdoor thing, people could come look at them. Justin, is that about as far as we took it? I forget what weekend it is.
Yeah, so 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 the idea was that basically we would treat the sculptures as we as we did the scarecrows, where people are just free to come and go and look at them, but without really necessarily trying to draw people in all at one time. So like, we we have related to the chamber that there shouldn't be anything like a ice sculpture carving demo or or things that would advertise people to to come down to the park and and any sort of uncontrolled crowd.
Yeah, all at one time, meaning.
Correct.
So the the so the the ICE Fest is separate from the lighted parade event, Jamie, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I didn't. I saw I think I saw some article about that, and I thought I saw that it was advertised like at 11:00 AM, and so I was trying to contrast because I've seen some conversations, like, for example, not having the the rink up, the ice rink up. I guess I would say I would maybe need to know more about the parade. I I've attended some of the parades, the Memorial Day parades or Easter Day parades. I think it's over a big enough space that people could make a choice as to whether or not they wanted to come out and watch the parade or not. But again, maybe there's something about the large crowd proximity thing that I am not understanding, whereas I could see a space like Monument Park being, you know, much smaller space, more difficult for people to sort of socially distance. I I guess I'm I'm saying I could see there maybe being a way a parade could work, but maybe I would need to know more about it or hear other people's thoughts.
Gotcha. Thanks for raising your hand on the on the feature. Julie, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, I do. And I have to say, this is the first time I've found out after all these months how to actually get out and raise my hand in the system, so without waving it.
Excellent.
Congratulations, Julie.
I noticed.
I'm kind of a slow learner at some things.
It's okay. It's all good.
As far as the issue, I have mixed feelings on this. We have deprived our community of so much from COVID. I'm hesitant to say no to one more thing. It's an outdoor activity. I think people are very aware, very mindful of the distancing and the masking, and I I I wouldn't be opposed to having it. I I think it's a good thing.
Okay, so so just thinking out loud here, so typically, what, you know, what would happen? And Justin, again, help me here if I'm a little bit off, but typically, somebody that wants to use the public right of way and/or a public park would fill out an application for the use of that. And then they would that application would be routed around for, you know, fire department approval, police approval, city approval, etc., for whatever. And they would provide as backup to the application, all the details, Jamie, again, essentially stuff that you're you're suggesting, how how what's the protocol for the parade? So I guess the the question we could do, I mean, if if council is interested in seeing more information on that, the applicants reached out to me, which is, you know, not directly to the city. I guess I could encourage them to submit the application in a hurry, and that could be item number two on our November 30th agenda next week, if that's fair, or if I'm not taking too much time from everybody by adding to the agenda. Then then they that would give them a chance to put down what they want to do. But I mean, if if we wait till the 14th for them to apply, there won't be, I don't think, enough time for them to advertise for the the day of the parade, plus that might even be the weekend they want to do it. I don't know what date they want to do it. Zach, I see you have your hand up, I think.
I think the biggest challenge is my understanding is the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services has a limit to 25 people for outdoor events. And so we may want it, and we may be able to separate, but the state says that's too many people, which is the same reason why the Detroit Parade is doing some weird thing this year. I would throw out to them, has anyone here been in St. Joseph in wintertime, St. Joseph, Michigan?
No.
Okay, I see. They have this fabulous thing called Light the Bluff, where the city is up on a bluff above Lake Michigan, and they have lights all over that thing, and it's it's very similar to how we've got the bluff going down to Mill Creek. That would be a type of of seasonal event that people could attend without similar to the ICE Fest. And I know it'd be real tough to put together in a short timeframe, but I would highly encourage folks to consider that as an alternative to the light parade.
I this is Paul. How do you? How would the people get to see if it's on the block? Do they have to go across Dexter Chelsea Road to see it or walk on the sidewalk there at the mill?
Yep, you could see it from down below. You can see it driving from your car across the bridge or on Jeffords. Lots of different opportunities also to see it, so you wouldn't even have to get out of your car if it's done well.
I'll just throw my two cents. You know, I if if the light parade has been like it's been in the past, it comes down and people decorate, you know, the various vehicles, and it comes down and people are standing or seeing it. If, in fact, they were in their cars along Main Street and along Baker Road or any other route that we determined that they could hold back many people that want to see it, I personally don't have a problem with it. If they comes down, people are sitting in their cars, taking a look at it, and then they the the thing exits, you know, wherever we say it should exit, and it's over. There we could put it people in the in the parking lots of the school and have them drive through there to see it. There could be a lot of different ways this they I mean, they could drive through it, but so there's other ways to do it besides just having everybody congregate outside of a in one spot if you're in your vehicles with your family.
So so it sounds like there's some interest in understanding what their idea is. Does does it make sense for me to contact them and give them a chance to submit their idea for us to consider more with more information in front of us next Monday?
Yes.
And could you also share with them, Sean, are are some of our suggestions, whether it's the bluff or whether it's just driving through to see it, whatever they whatever they would see, think that would work for them?
Yeah, I'll share. I'll share all the comments. I wrote down I wrote down Zach's. I wrote down yours, Jamie's. I said, Jamie, you still have your hand up. Are you aware of that?
I wanted to clarify. So I just pulled up this Michigan Department of Health and Human Services order, and maybe it's a semantic issue. Seems like, I mean, the outdoor gathering prohibition is saying at non-residential venues, 25 or few persons. So I think it comes down to what you determine to be a venue in this context.
Right. That's always been a sticky gray area.
Yeah.
The the other thing, Sean, is I believe when council approved the student activity quasi parade, there were some restrictions that were requested or put on that that event. And maybe that's something that that either council should see or should be shared with the potential applicants.
Okay, we can review those. Like I said, I my my goal is I I didn't want to just make a decision one way or the other without talking it over with all of you and figuring out how we wanted to steer them, and I will take the guidance back to them and encourage them if they still want to do it to apply. Unfortunately, they'll have to put that together quickly, Justin, so you should be prepared to have that come in, I would think, if they're interested. Okay, well, thank you for letting me have that conversation as part of my report. I don't have too much more to add. We are still working on the DAFD union negotiations a little bit. We're still tweaking a couple of sections. We've got hoping to have a meeting after the Thanksgiving holiday and hoping to have it all wrapped up by our December DAFD board meeting, which would be the third Thursday in December. So does anybody have any questions for me? I'd like to just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and keep the meeting going. Okay.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks. Yeah, you're welcome, Paul. Okay, so next up is consent agenda. And just so that everybody's aware of what this is, we have four items on the consent agenda, and we voted on them all as one with no discussion.
Excuse me, Sean. I don't want to. We still still have a
Oh. I missed a report. I apologize.
Yes, okay, please. Thank you.
I I apologize, Alex. Councilmember report, Student Representative Alex Gilver, your report on page 69 and 70 of the packet, please.
Yes, thank you. So I hope everyone enjoyed the snow we had this weekend. And so while we're all getting into that festive mood, I'd like to provide some suggestions so that we can have an inclusive holiday display around the city. And so, as I mentioned in the last meeting, I reached out to eight community groups in the surrounding area. Rabbi Nadav Kane was the only one who was able to provide me with some advice, and he was very kind to provide the following suggestions. First, he suggested that we display some Jewish stars, which are known as the Star of David. He additionally requested that we display a menorah and some dreidels. Finally, he did request that we remove the nativity scene. And so taking his comments into consideration in the research idea in my own time, also understanding the limitations of our budget and fundraising and time constraints, I've came up with the following suggestions. So first, within Monument Park, I would like to consider the idea of putting in some dreidels and presents. I think this is a really great idea because it shows an intersection between the Christmas holiday and Hanukkah holiday, and it creates this nice intersection. I think it promotes a sense of community. Additionally, I understand that the nativity scene is not placed by the city, and it is placed by the fire union. So anyone who would like to put up decorations that are meaningful to them, I encourage them to request that permit. And then in the future, we can consider those permits and the permit of the fire union as well. Additionally, another idea we could consider is putting white and blue garland around a few street poles, and white and blue are significant colors to the Hanukkah holiday, and I really think that is a great way we can include that. Finally, I think a great way to encourage our community to grow together is to have businesses decorate their windows with diverse displays. And so within the packet, I've included a mockup of what that could look like, but really, the ideas are endless. And I think this would be a really fantastic way to make people passionate about their community. Finally, there is a timeline of holidays I've included on page 70. I think that for all of us, maybe we can look into these holidays and just learn about new cultures that are interesting to other people, and so we can understand what other people do. So with that in mind, if it's okay with council, I would love to reach out to those businesses. I would need the contact information for them to provide them with some information on why it's important to have inclusive displays and some ideas for them to consider. Finally, if it's okay, I will move forward with seeing how we can incorporate that garland and dreos and presents up. But I do understand it is late in the season, so anything that we do is going to be hard pressed to make happen, but I really feel that it's a great step forward in the future. So if anyone has any suggestions or comments, I would love to hear them.
Questions for Alex?
Isabella?
Yeah, I had a question. So like, in your research, I know you didn't get to talk to many people, and you only got to talk to the rabbi. But did you find anything from other religions such as Kwanzaa that we could put up in the in the memorial parks, so it's not only like Judeo-Christian religions being shown?
Yes, I did. As you see, the third picture in there is a potential Kwanzaa display. And then on the page 70, there is the other holidays. I tried to be catchy-entus of our strict budget and timeline. And so I thought, what would be the most reasonable for this year? And so this suggestion is only for this year in our very short timeline, but yes.
I also had another suggestion. So could we take the packet, which you have your information over the holidays, and put them near the scene so that even if we don't have, like, like, actual, like, monuments or not monuments, but like, things from that religion, there could be like a description of what would be there if we could have it there?
I think that's something we can look into, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Bella. Donna, you have your hand up?
Yes, I'm wondering, Alex, when you started to think about this, have you experienced something or heard people talking about things being exclusive?
Um, no, I personally haven't heard any members of the community say that they feel excluded, but I don't think someone should have to be in the situation where they say, I feel excluded. I think we should be making a forward effort, and so that everyone can feel inclusive, and if they don't necessarily celebrate those holidays, they can be aware that other people in other communities celebrate these holidays, or visitors who pass by the city can see their holiday included.
I wasn't suggesting that we base it on somebody complaining. I was trying to understand how you got where you were with it and how it fits into the grand scheme.
Okay, I'm so sorry for that, then. I definitely did not mean to misconstrue your words. No, I I just think that right now is a very tight, important time for moving forward with understanding other people's beliefs, cultures, and practices. And so I think now is a great time, more than ever, to start making that progress. Even though these are some very small suggestions, I think going forward, we can consider them and continue to add to this list. And I think it will be something that's very important and meaningful to our community.
Alex, have so I appreciate the research you've done on on this and the, you know, the the nice report back. It's it's good information. When I when I heard you bring up the idea, you know, prior to this, I was thinking, and maybe I heard it wrong or whatever, I was thinking along the lines of either adding to what's there or allowing others to place something there. And I guess I I I wasn't really thinking that we were removing anything as part of including something. So I I'm I'm thinking that those, in some ways, are in are opposite of each other, but what I what I was wondering is, maybe you could approach the fire department union to see if they would be willing to sponsor getting some of the additional elements that you've shown here in your pictures. You know, and instead of placing one or none, place more than that, you know what I mean? It seems they'd be wanting to put other things into the park.
Right. And so the suggestion to remove the nativity scene was not my own. That was the opinion of the rabbi. My opinion was that because it's not being placed by us, that we should let it let it stand. And if another group wanted to place their own structure or symbol or decoration, that we let them do that. However, I definitely will reach out to the fire union then to see if that is something they'd be interested in. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Might might be might be a quick way to get some other, you know, pieces in place that would show the the recognition of other heritage culture, you know, religion. Religion. All at the same time.
I think it's a fantastic idea. I'll do that soon.
Let me just move over here, I see a couple of blue hands. Julie?
Thank you. First, I want to thank you so much, Alex, for all the work you've put into this. I think it's a wonderful idea. I'm definitely in favor of expanding, you know, cultures and. Other areas into our park, whether it be the Hanukkah or the Kwanzaa or whatever it is, I'm definitely in favor of that. I'm not in favor of removing the nativity scene, though. But I just want to let you know how much I appreciate how much work you've put into this, and thank you so much, and hopefully we can move forward with this.
Thank you so much, and thank you for providing me the opportunity to partake in this.
You're welcome. Jamie?
Yeah, thanks, thanks.
Yeah, sure, sorry, I just saw a blue hand pop up.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I do want to echo the the thanks for the work that you put into this, Alex. One thing I that stuck out to me too, from the feedback you got from the rabbi. Maybe I could pull it up here if I can find it. Just that the efforts of inclusion should be made in good faith, so they don't appear in genuine. I guess I would need to learn more about the history of the fire union group and how that originally came to be, and to what extent. There was community support for that effort, or to what extent community feedback was sought about that. I guess. In terms of trying to, you know, still appear genuine about something, I know everybody is very aware of issues surrounding inclusion, and I think those are all. Positive changes. I wouldn't want to assume. What displays people in our community would want without some effort to reach out to them. Because otherwise, I might. You know, if I were a member of this community and suddenly displays that were sort of sanctioned by the city were popping up, and I felt that they didn't reflect. You know, what I wanted, maybe I would, you know, be wondering how the seven people on council came to their determination, so. At some, you know, I don't know how we would do that for this year, I would like to see somehow. If it's something that's coming from the city, I would want to see greater public input about what the display might be. And I would also like to learn more about how. The fire union came to install the nativity scene in the first place. It seems to me if they're an organization and they have a permit, it doesn't seem like right now there's anything that's stopping from some other organizations submitting a similar permit, is that correct?
That's my understanding, and that's why I believe I mentioned in my report, I think that would be a great way in future years for other groups, cultures, or otherwise people to put up displays that are meaningful to them. And I think that is some very reasonable comments, and I'd be interested to know as well.
Right, right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jamie, you're welcome, and I'm not even sure I know the answer to this. I mean, that nativity scene has been in the park. So many times over the time I've lived here, and I think it goes back longer than that. I don't even know if they officially pull a permit. Justin, can you tell me what they do or don't do for that?
I believe they do submit a park use permit every year.
Okay. And that's administratively approved?
I believe so.
Okay. So I don't, yeah, I mean, so Jamie, there's not a. There's not really a council. Oversight on on that, I think that, you know, if anybody submitted something like that, you know, something similar or whatever, that it would be handled the same way, you know, there's no, the park is open. Assuming it wasn't, you know, something that was. I don't know what would be objectionable, okay, I'm not the judge of that, but you know what I'm saying, assuming it's appropriate for one of the different. Holiday calendars as Alex displayed or was associated with something like that, I would think that would be appropriate. Zach, are you, does your hand up?
So I'm gonna throw this out there, I think a relatively easy thing we could do this year is to wrap the a couple of street poles with various lights for the different holidays representative. Christmas has the red and white, Hanukkah has the blue and white, and there are a couple of colors associated with Kwanzaa. So perhaps we wrap a couple of poles around the park in those different colors. I think for the Hanukkah display, it's probably most appropriate for us to invite the folks of Beth Israel congregation to to do a display on their own and say, hey, here's the permit process, we want you guys to participate. Please do. So I throw my hat behind those.
Good suggestions, Zach, all good.
This is Paul, it's the Firefighters Association, not the union.
Sorry, Paul, my bad word choice, yep. Thank you for that correction.
Yeah, no problem, just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, so with all that in mind, what steps does everyone feel comfortable with me taking, moving forward to accomplish this?
Zach, Alex, I think you got to come up with your. Two items that you wrote down here, the dreidels and the presents. Somehow, I don't know how you're going to display those. But also the wrapping of the garlands, that you make that application, just like the Firefighters Association has done to Justin and let him approve it. And then you, once you get that, then you can put them up. That's the process, and that can be done, it's just that it's so late to have it done now, that's going to rush you to do it, but if you still want to do it, that's the processes, I understand that you can make that application. The city will make the determination and. We move on, we'll move on from there. I personally don't think there's going to be a lot of of people upset at all or worried about or have any fright at all about what you suggested at all, I think there's plenty of Jewish. Members of our community and they'll accept it and as well as they have accepted the presentation of the of the nativity scene in the past, so. It's not been a big issue, and I don't think this is going to be one either, just move forward and say what you want to do and make your application.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think the the other important thing to. To sort of recognize out of this is, I really like the holiday timeline, I mean. You know, going forward, we could we could. Make people aware that if anybody has any. You know, displays associated with, whether it's Diwali or Hanukkah, or you know, any of these that are on this list. We could remind them that, you know, that. All the seasons go from, you know, mid-November to almost end of November or mid-February, it's longer than just what we traditionally think of as December and the. Around the Christmas holiday, so. You know, I think we could promote that a little bit on what the process is, if there's a group that wanted to do that. I don't think that necessarily hurts, but anybody that Alex, I would say anybody that is interested in having a display of some type should. You know, contact the office and Justin can help me through the process of, you know, where and how and. You know, location in the park, that type of thing. I don't know how easy it is for our DPW to get a couple different color lights, like it was suggested by Zach, that's. That's a pretty good idea, I think, too, you know, just on, I don't know, there's got to be what, a half a dozen poles around the park that. Could show that difference.
There are other hands up.
Yep, yep, wow, I see, and then Bella, please.
Hi, so Alex, I'd also say thank you for doing all this work and research and bringing it to us to talk about. And I just want to point out that, you know, this is, we are talking about being inclusive here, so I think we need to be careful about only reaching out to the one group and telling them to apply, and I know that the other groups didn't respond to you, but I think it may be a good idea to just do the due diligence and throw out that second form or that second piece of communication to those other groups as well, so that they know that they are welcome to do that. And I don't know if you did contact somebody, I don't know who didn't respond to you, but I don't know if there were representation, like if it was representative of all the different holidays that you put out on the list. But I just, you know, I just want to make sure that. Somebody doesn't come back in two weeks and say, hey, this is here, why didn't you ask us if we could put something out when we're trying to be as inclusive as possible?
Yeah, the hard part in this, that's why I was, well, that's why I was suggesting, you know, maybe through our email, we could. Make people aware of what the process is, and then if whichever group or individual saw the communication, it would be up to them, which is kind of what I think Zach is implying, it's up to them to apply if they so choose and want to display something, as opposed to we inadvertently omit somebody by not. Reaching out to them.
Okay, yeah, sorry if I didn't, I didn't quite hear that, but yeah, I just just want to make sure that we're not, you know, favoring one group over another.
Yep, good point, strong point.
Okay, I would like to quickly clarify that for each of the holidays I listed on my timeline, there was one group that I reached out for that holiday.
Okay, great. Bella, I'm sorry, wow, were you, were you all done?
Oh, yeah, I'm done.
Okay, okay, Bella, your hands up, please.
Yeah, so I basically was gonna say what you were and what Mrs. Hubbard was gonna say, but like in addition to like the email, we could also put like flyers up so that people that don't get the email are more aware, or like people that are technically challenged are more aware of what to do and like feel more like feel like they got communicated the idea of what was happening and they have a chance at, including their religion. And I think like that would help also for next year, I think it would be more inclusive that way.
Okay, well, we could certainly carry some of this forward as well. Alex, good job all around.
Okay, thank you. And then very quickly, was reaching out to those businesses to encourage the window displays to be inclusive and diverse, something that we were comfortable moving forward with or no?
I'll just throw out that out, it's really late right now for people to make that decision and do something, okay? Maybe next year could be done and get this ahead of time, but you know, we're talking here now the end of November and to change a display or to put up a display, they have to do a lot of thought process, if they want to do it, how they want to do it, so forth and so on, and to me, it's just very rushed, that's just my opinion. Not that it's not that.
Yeah.
I may say they're approaching the business, I think you should talk to them and ask them if they're interested, so I'd say yes. Do approach the businesses this year even.
Sounds like it's a matter of how much time you have, Alex.
Okay, I can print the email out tomorrow, I would need the contact information, though.
Well, I'm sure we could share what we have, but you know, there's a lot of businesses in town, so that might take a little bit of doing, but why don't we, why don't we talk about it a little bit offline on what the next step is for that, okay?
Okay, thank you.
The chamber may be able to help you out on that, Sean, maybe we have all the businesses listed.
Yeah, that's all, that's kind of what I was thinking, is maybe there's a central communication that could go out in that manner, you know what I mean? We just have to work together to figure out, make sure we write it the right way. Or, you know, so we're presenting a uniform message similar to that email blast on what the process is for doing it, that's all I'm getting at. Okay, I'd like to move on to the Consent Agenda if we could, please.
Zach had his hand up.
Oh. I missed it, sorry, Zach, my apologies.
I hope members of the public would give us some feedback during the open comment ended this meeting about this topic. And a question for Mr. Schlaff is, is it difficult or easy for us to wrap a couple of poles with different lights?
We're gonna start that process, I'm thinking after Thanksgiving. I'm gonna talk to Kurt about getting, seeing how available some different lights are, I think, Sean, you said blue and white. With COVID going on, we're gonna have two employees attempting to put all our lights up. One week on, one week off. So I can talk to Kurt and see how available the lights would be to grab some to do them, and I can talk to Kurt about that.
And usually, we do have a bit of a time lag between. Ordering and putting things up, so. I think we'll have to get in touch with our vendors and see, see what. Kind of timeframe they can provide that those in if they are able to provide them.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we're stepping in the right direction, let's do what we can. And be reasonable about it and. Certainly understand the manpower issue, but do what we can. Donna, I thank you, Dan. Donna, you have your hand up, please?
I do, but I can't read the consent agenda, I'll make a motion for those three items, but I cannot see what the items are.
Okay, there's four items, one is consideration of bills and payroll and the amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight fifteen, ten.
Okay.
The second is consideration of the approval of the Washtenaw Regional Resource Management Authority fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. The third is consideration of setting a public hearing for the December fourteenth. Twenty twenty city council meeting regarding amendments to the General Code of Ordinances, section ten dash thirty-eight. Ownership. And the fourth item on the Consent Agenda is consideration of a resolution establishing the authorized signatories for MERS contracts.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Ms. Fisher, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Ms. Knight, thank you, Julie. Ms. Jones, if you would call the vote to approve the Consent Agenda, I would appreciate it, please.
Yes. Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Abstain.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes, okay, motion carries six zero with one abstain. We have no old business this evening. So we're moving down to new business item L one. Which is consideration of a scope of services for the design of Second Street Water Main Replacement, Sidewalk Installation, and Road Reconstruction. From OHM Advisors for an amount not to exceed one hundred and three thousand, five hundred. Hold on, let me see if, Zach, do you have your hand up, anybody have a hand or?
I'll move that.
Thank you, Mr. Michelle's, is there a second? Second by Ms. Knight, thank you, Julie. I will. Ask council, do you have any questions on the proposal first, we can, we can have Justin go over it, what's your preference? Pretty self-explanatory?
Yes.
Okay.
So I mean, if you'd like an explanation, I'll defer to Patrick with OHM.
Only if we need to, if it's cleared, everybody, Justin, I'm gonna keep it going, I don't see anybody raising their hand, everybody understands the proposal and what we're doing?
Yes.
If there, if anybody has questions, if any of the Newark council members have questions about anything, please don't hesitate to contact Justin, or if you want to go over the budget worksheets that's in there, the projection. I'm happy to help with that or answer a question to the best of my ability as well. So, okay, Ms. Jones, if you would, please call the vote.
Yes. Knight?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes, thank you, motion carries seven zero. New business item L two is consideration of a quitclaim deed for road right-of-way adjacent to the Dexter Harbor Road property.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Cousins, thank you, Paul.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Fisher, thank you, Donna. Any discussion needed, everybody understand what's going on here?
We're quit claiming property to ourselves.
Correct.
Correct. It's mostly just cleanup. There's an area in the road that is not road right-of-way, and we're going to make it road right-of-way.
Everybody good? Okay, seeing no hands, no questions, Justin, thanks for your work on that cleanup item.
Welcome.
Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve. That action.
Okay, Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries, we have council comments, this is an opportunity for council to make comments on anything here at the end of the meeting. I'll just go in sort of in order of how I see it on my participant window. Zach?
I have been trying to visit Brighton Fire Station number thirty-four for the past three weeks. It's brand new, and everyone I've talked to in the area has said you have to go see that one. It's so new that it doesn't have the buzzer on. It's so new that it doesn't have the buzzer on the front door. They're still working on that. But it's highly recommended. So one of these days, I'm kind of finally get there when people are in the building. Another thing that I'll bring up for our planning staff, I've talked with a bunch of folks about the seating we've had in the parking spaces along Main this year, and a lot of folks were supportive of that. So when winter comes and you're getting a little bit slow, I would like to see us discuss allowing that on a more permanent nature, maybe not as large areas because hopefully won't have to so far distant in the future, and perhaps a little, something a little more elegant than the orange and yellow or orange and white barriers. But everyone I've talked to has really enjoyed it. And I hope that'll be permanent. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Zach. Julie?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, happy, safe, and hopefully COVID-free Thanksgiving.
Same to you, Julie. Thank you. Paul?
I just want to welcome the two new members to the council. I don't think I've done it officially, and so welcome aboard and look forward to many, a couple of years here of a good decision-making and process there. Thank you for running. I know that's not easy. There was tough to campaign, and I appreciate everybody that worked effort. And Zach, welcome back aboard again, and look forward to how we're going to arrange these various committees and commissions that we have to deal with there. And lastly, everybody have a safe Thanksgiving. Enjoy your small groups.
Thank you, Mr. Cousins. Jamie?
Hi, yep. I also want to begin by thanking you all for bearing with me during my first meeting. Now, on this side of the sort of proverbial table, I look forward to working with all of you and getting to know you better. I want to thank the City of Dexter voters for their support, and I look forward to getting to know them better, too. I will be attending the newly elected officials training sponsored by MML in January, so I'm looking forward to learning more about that. And I also wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving also.
Great. Thank you, Jamie. Wow?
I just want to say thanks to everybody for making me feel welcome as a new person here, and thanks for your patience, both to council staff and the community. As, you know, I go with this learning curve that is happening. But yeah, I'm excited to really, to be here. I'm privileged to be here. I really appreciate the support of the community, same as Jamie said. And I look forward to really digging into things and, and getting to work with all of you guys, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
Yes, I'd like to welcome and wish happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you. Same to you. Bella?
Sorry, I was muted, but I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving and has a good time with their friends and family. It's like you can, if you live with them, like, so that you're not in big groups. But yeah, I thought it was a good time. I love, I liked hearing Alex's report and him being involved in council was really fun to see. And so, yeah, I hope everyone has a good weekend, and I'll see you in like two weeks.
Actually, three, but you're welcome to participate next Monday at our workshop, special meeting, too. So Alex?
Yes. Congratulations to the newly elected council members. Ms. Griffin is Ms. Hubbard. And then congratulations to Mr. Michelle's on his reelection, or reappointment, or yes. But happy Thanksgiving to all who celebrate, and I hope everyone's today is safe and healthy.
Very good. Thank you, everybody, for your comments this evening. Happy Thanksgiving. We're down to non-arranged participation. Justin, if you can help me look for hands, I see a hand. Stephanie Henyard, if you could unmute her, please? Welcome, Stephanie.
Hello, okay, one second. Let me get the, this is actually Ryan Henyard. Sorry, we're sharing a computer.
No problem, Ryan. If you could give us your name and address, tell us that you're participating from home.
Sure thing. This is Ryan Henyard at 3577 Shaw Court, participating from home here in Dexter.
Great. Floor is yours, sir.
I wanted to applaud Alex and Bella's participation as student members of council. It has been really fun to watch you all dig in and find issues and causes that you can put your neat perspectives towards, and I really, really appreciate your input on a lot of these issues. I am also in support of trying to make Dexter more inclusive wherever possible, and I think that Alex's report does a really great job of outlining ways that we can do so. I wanted to just call in to, A, congratulate you for having that work recognized, and B, offer a suggestion about how to possibly make getting feedback a little easier. There is a group known as the Washtenaw, I think it's the Washtenaw County Interfaith, Interfaith Roundtable. It's a group made of members from a lot of different faith organizations all across Washtenaw County. It's based in Arbor, but I know that members of Beth Israel are on the board, as well as members from many local, many different local faith communities. It might save you a lot of time and, and pain from trying to track down a lot of individual people to ask about things, and instead maybe inviting some folks from their roundtable to think about, which in their roundtable is specifically about trying to build inclusivity, inclusivity civility and share community from people from different faith-based backgrounds. And talking to that group may be a good way to think about, how do we find an equitable way to honor all these different traditions without putting too much of a burden on, on any particular person for having to have, having to keep, keep everything up. So I don't have a particular contact with them. I just know they exist, and I figured that I shared out with them. I'm probably pretty packed this year, but if you want to do this again for, for next year, I'm happy to lend support as a community member for this project, and thank you for taking it forward.
Thank you for your comments, Ryan. Well said. Thanks for attending the meeting as well. Mr. McCarter?
Hey, Sean.
Hey, okay, you're unmiked or you're unmuted. Great.
Thank you. Can you please give me a thumb if you can hear me, because I actually am on two Zoom calls simultaneously here? Thank you. First time ever I've actually been on three Zoom calls earlier this evening. Main thing I want to do is I want to put an incredible shout out to Justin Breyer for the handling of the election. I am actually, as I speak to you, I am still on the Michigan State Board of Elections canvassing call, which has been going on since one o'clock this afternoon. And I've heard many clerks from across the state speak to the circumstances in their districts, to the dedication of the poll workers and their staffs. And I know firsthand what an incredible job Justin did for the election in Dexter City. And I am just extremely grateful for that. I am pausing temporarily to see whether my name just came up in the queue. Sorry about that.
It's okay. That's why we give everybody five minutes, Jim.
Yeah, well, I'm not. I'm not next up. So, um, yeah, the process was one of the best, and under the circumstances, maybe the best. So, Justin, I can't tell on my little iPhone here whether or not, yeah, I do see that you're still on the call. I, I know that you provided me a lot of information as I called routinely to check on things. And you always provided me accurate information. You were incredibly knowledgeable about the process, what was going on in Dexter, and when it came down to Election Day, things went so smoothly. So gratefulness, my gratefulness abounds. That's it for today. And welcome, oh, excuse me, welcome to the new council people. Congratulations to you. And I look forward to listening to your participation and your views and having you join the great leadership of this city.
Thank you, Ms. McCarter.
You got it.
Okay, any other members of the public that would like to speak this evening? Well, I'm not seeing anybody. I think we've had a good first meeting as a new body of seven. I'd like to thank everybody myself, wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, and I'll seek a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
I'll move.
Move by Ms. Fisher, second by Mr. Cousins, I think it was. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Have a good evening, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Dustin?
Yeah.
Don't forget about the able assistant.
The what?
Don't forget about your able assistant. And you're taking in all these kudos.
Have a good night.
You, too.